Hey, good afternoon. Sorry to be getting started a little late this evening. So today, boy, today's July 1st. Only six months left for shopping for Christmas, if you keep in track of that. And the commissioners have a list of items that we're interested in for Christmas, so I'll make sure to pass that out. Welcome. We're glad that you're here on this good Monday afternoon. So it is the tradition of this board and boards all across the country. We do a couple of things as we get started. We have our pledge and we have what's called a solemnizing prayer. Solemnizing prayer is for the commissioners. It's not for you. You're welcome to listen in, but this is for us because what we do here, we take very seriously and we look for wisdom as we make decisions that affect the entire county. So commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Lord, we thank you for this today, that we can come today to represent the county commissioners at this meeting today. We ask you to give them the wisdom they need to make the right decision today, Lord. Again, we thank you for their dedication, love they have for Rowan County, Lord, and the work they do, Lord. So much time spent behind the scenes taking care of everything that needs to be taken care for this county, dear Lord. We pray your blessings upon them, dear Lord. Thank you for the prayers we have today to call upon your name. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain Taylor. Appreciate your time here with us. All right, so I've got some changes to make to the agenda. The first one is you received the Rowan County Rescue Packet. We're going to add that as item 11A. And then we also have at your seats an email from Council D's on Duke Energy Easement. We'll add that as 11B. And then our Finance Director has provided from Social Services a budget amendment. We'll add that as 11C. I would also like to, on the active agenda... Item number six. We're going to remove, we're going to delete item six. And I think we're going to make sure that under, after the public comment period, we have, we'll make item 2A announcements. All right, everyone got that? All right, anything further? Any other changes? Anything? Nope. All right, good. So a motion to approve the budget as amended?
You mean the agenda?
I'm sorry, what did I say?
So moved.
Yeah, so I don't know what I said. All right. I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Motion in a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Let's see, we have minutes from June 17th. Motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, then we have the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. I have a second.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone for public comment? All right, then announcement time. Commissioner Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if the citizens are aware, but a couple of weeks ago, we were given what they call, Chairman Ed's calls them challenge coins. I call them county medals, just because I think it means more. And we were tasked with handing out, each of us, 10 of these. And so far, I think I'm ahead eight to nothing on everybody else because I thought this was such a good program. I wanted to get mine on out and get them taken care of. So at this time, I'd like to call Chaplain Michael Taylor up front, please. I'd like to award you my coin for all the service that you've done for the commissioners and for the county. I don't know if a lot of people don't realize this, but Chaplain Taylor does not get paid to come up here to do our prayers for us. He does it because he's a Christian man and wants to do it for us, and I'd like to award my coin to him.
Got a lot going on. Commissioners, Scott Shelton from EDC had something that he needed to be added to today's agenda. And so I don't know what happened, if he sent it to me or if I didn't send it to you, but there's an item we're going to try to get added. Has to do with our Hinkle Project. Not, no, Chewy's on here.
Yeah.
Right, right. Yeah. Yeah, there's a, well, yeah, that's a different one. So the one you have is a different one. So, yeah, you can send that to me?
Yeah, I just emailed it to you.
Okay.
What it is, is Project Care.
Project Care, that's the one.
The commissioners approved an incentive agreement a few months ago for Project Care. We've been waiting for a decision for a while, but basically, we found out just the other day that they had acquired some property from their neighbor. And the reason for the delay was they wanted to add that property to the description in the incentive agreement. So what we were asking the commissioners to do was just approve a slightly modified incentive agreement. No terms changed as far as incentives or investment or jobs. It would just add that description of that property to the agreement.
Right. Carolyn, I for, I'm sorry for all this, you guys. Carolyn, I forwarded that to you by email. So I don't know if you can make copies of that for us that we can add? Yeah? Is that okay? All right.
So do we need to make an adjustment to the agenda then?
Yeah, we're going to have to do that. So let's add an item 11D. 11D for Project Care. So I misspoke. So Project Care.
Make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Thank you. If you have a second? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, I think we're thinking where we need to be. Good? All right. Item number three, a public hearing to consider financing proposals for capital project for Rowan Salisbury School System and Rowan Cabarrus Community College. Over to you.
Thank you. During fiscal year 2019, the board had agreed that the county would finance capital improvements for Rowan Salisbury Schools in the amount of 6.5 million. And then for Rowan Cabarrus Community College for a million 350,000. Due to timing of bids and that, construction bids and some other factors, we are just now trying to do the financing. Part of the project for RCCC was roofing, I think, and so we agreed to go ahead and pay cash for that during fiscal year 19, 2019, so we don't have that being carried forward. So the amount that we are looking to finance now is 7.1 million. The Finance Department, particularly Derek Atkins, released bids, or an RFP for bids, and we received the bids, which are summarized in your agenda packet. The low bid that we received is from STI Institutional and Government with a rate of 2.04 percent. So we are asking you to hold the public hearing and then to approve the resolution, a declaration, a budget amendment, and authorization be granted to the Finance Department to establish an escrow account for the loan proceeds.
Well, those being separate, are those separate motions or all one?
All one.
Okay.
It's fine.
Okay, any questions for Leslie?
Yeah, Leslie, what's the debt service going to be annually on 7.1 million at that 2.2 percent rate?
Hang on, one second. It's going to be in the ballpark of about 420,000.
And that's on a 15-year payback?
Yes, sir. No, sir, that's on a 10-year payback.
10-year. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
400?
That don't sound right.
Doesn't sound right.
It's semi-annual.
Oh, okay.
Semi-annual payments.
So it's 800,000.
So 800,000 a year.
800,000 a year.
But that's budgeted?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's already budgeted. I hope, I hope it is.
It's budgeted. This year it was budgeted, last year.
Okay, all right. All right, no other questions, and we'll open the floor. We'll have a public hearing if anyone would like to comment on this financing package. All right, seeing none, we'll close the floor. Public comment, do we have a motion? And the motion would be to approve the low bid, the resolution, approve the low bid. I'll make the motion. I move that we approve the low bid received from STI Institutional and Government and approve the resolution declaration, approve the budget amendment, and opening of an escrow account for financing proceeds.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Muir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is the temporary use permit request from Chandler Concrete. They want to locate a concrete batch plant at the intersection of Long Ferry Road and Front Creek Road to serve the North Point Development Project, which we all are excited about and also refer to as the Chewy Project. This is just, well, not really administrative. It's a legislative action approved by the board. It doesn't require a public hearing. No real findings of fact, but it's just certification that it does meet the standards in the zoning ordinance. And I'll cover them right at the end. So this is a generalized site plan. It does meet the setbacks off of Long Ferry Road as well as the newly named Front Creek Drive, which is here. Driveway permit for the project was received about 1:30 this afternoon from DOT. The hours of operation, as per the application, are a little bit odd, but it's that way simply because they can serve the project in a timely manner, and some of this work is going to be occurring in the early morning hours. They anticipate that the project for this particular aspect of the batch plant will be finishing up at the end of this calendar year, which is December 31st. If you look at the project or this temporary use request relative to the Chewy Project, you see it's somewhat of the out parcel here, this being the Chewy facility, and they'll set their operations up here. Got a couple pictures from Mr. Cartner, who's representing Chandler Concrete. But this is a plant that's currently being disassembled in Meben that was used for the Amazon Distribution Project there. Once it's disassembled, it will be erected here on Long Ferry Road to serve this project. So I mentioned this earlier. We've got three generalized findings or criteria in the ordinance. And first is that will not materially endanger the public health, safety, or welfare. The staff recommendation for that conclusion is to ensure the standard, the applicant will obtain all requisite building permits, driveway access, and zoning permits prior to operation. The second is the use will not have a substantial negative impact on adjoining properties. Standard is deemed satisfied as all surrounding properties are a mix of commercial services and transportation uses along the I-85 corridor. And the last is that the use will be approved for a specific time, not to exceed two years. We recommend that it be approved for a period of 12 months of operation, just in case something, something happens, one way or the other, and that gives them sufficient time. Bob Cartner, who some of you all may know as the local rep for Chandler Concrete, is here, and we've been working together on this. If you've got any questions, you can ask him specifics, but as staff, we do recommend that this be approved by the board.
Has he been hard to work with?
No comment.
Well, good. Bob, we're glad you got this work. Local work, local economy, local folks, that's good. So, good for y'all.
One thing I don't know that I put in the presentation, but I think it's in the memo. This is the second time, well, this is actually the third application that we've had for a batch plant on this particular site in the last 10 years. So it's really nothing new that's showing its face out there. And I think Chandler may have had one of those applications in the past. I can't remember, but, yeah.
All right, any questions for Ed or for Bob? Bob, anything to add? No? Okay. All right. Do we have a motion to approve temporary use permit for a period of 12 months for Chandler Concrete?
So moved.
In a second? All right, any other?
You need to do the recommendations.
No. All right, motion in a second. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Go get to work. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Ed. All right, Shane, SNIA 02-19.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the board's seen plenty of these applications, especially the ones out in the Mooresville Motorsports area and the western side of the county, where we have several industrial parks. This being one of the numbered parks or lots within the park that's undeveloped, 405 Performance Road. ABR Properties is requesting the intensity allocation. They have need for a 12,000 square foot building, and this would allow them to exceed the administrative allowance. We're well under that threshold that we can allocate. This request meets all standards for approval. Any questions?
So this does not require a public hearing?
No, sir.
All right, any questions for Shane? So we would need a motion to approve SNIA 02-19?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Shane, thank you. Yeah, there's the agreement. We removed item number six. We'll move on to item number seven. ADW Presentation of Western Plaza. Welcome, gentlemen. Good to see you all again. It's been a few days.
As he's searching for our slide deck, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Chairman and other commissioners, it's a pleasure to be here with you this afternoon. My name is Bob Lauer with ADW Architects. This is Philip Steele. Bill, how about it?
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to go through our Rowan County Agricultural Center project that we were hired a few months ago. We were hired to do some programming with Agricultural Center, and you all have a package at your desk, and I'm going to go through everything. The first slide that we're talking about is the, gets you oriented to the project site. This is the Western Plaza Mall. This is the main entrance into the mall. We'll call it the east entrance. This is our proposed agricultural center office area. This is the proposed agricultural meeting area, which is the actual existing Belk Facility. So that kind of gets you oriented. North is down on the sheet, lower end. So I'm going to use north and east throughout my presentation today, so you're all familiar with the project site. We were hired by the commissioners, the county, to do a program. We met with each department at the Agricultural Center. The Agricultural Center is about 17,000 square feet. The proposed agricultural meeting hall area, which is an existing Belk area, is about 43,000 square feet. We're going to talk a little bit about what goes inside the Agricultural Center. Agricultural Center is, comprises of four departments. You have the Cooperative Extension Program here. You have the Forest Service, kind of the mint green color. The buff color is the U.S. Farm Service Agency. And then the Soil/Water Conservation is kind of the purple color. As you come into the main lobby area, which is straight on into the floor plan, these agencies want to be part of the mall, but they also want to be, have the control space. So the lobby is a control space that you can get into each part of the departments. So you can get into the Cooperative Extension. The Cooperative Extension is approximately about 7500 square feet. One of the major programs that when we talked to everyone was having the, sorry, the demonstration classroom, and it's also a teaching tool for a kitchen. And what this is, as people coming into the facility, they learn culinary skills, they learn about nutrition and things like that. So that's one of the biggest square footage of the Cooperative Extension area. Again, the green area is the Forest Service, about 2,000 square feet. We have, the workshop areas in the back, there's an overhead door towards the back. The Soil/Water and the U.S. Farm Agency wants to be adjacent. They actually do share a server space. And one or another thing about the program spaces, we try to incorporate all the offices towards the back to get as much natural light into the facility for the offices as much as possible. A lot of the other program spaces don't need a lot of the natural light, such as the shared classroom, the demonstration classroom, or call it demonstration kitchen area. The next program is the Agricultural Meeting Hall. It can accommodate for about 1,000 people. It also can be broken up into smaller areas. So you can kind of see the dividing walls. You can get four conferences going at one time, you can get two conferences, et cetera. There's also conference breakout spaces on the outside, kind of on the left-hand side of the, behind the agricultural meeting areas. These are for just smaller groups, could be a 20-person group, a 10-person group, and so on. There's also a catering kitchen. Catering kitchen was placed towards the lower left, I'm sorry, the upper left-hand corner. It's placed near a existing service area. We thought that was an appropriate area to have the catering kitchen, to get the food in and out of there when you have events. We also have storage, as well as accommodate enough restrooms for 1,000 people at one time. As you come into the main lobby space, there is the main and pre-function, which is now the existing, kind of the barrel vault, circulation of the old existing Belk. We would keep that intact. We added another pre-function space here with a lot of natural light in the space. We want to try to create as much natural light, as well as outdoor patio space for different types of events. I could see a wedding here or something, or a convention here. You can have some outdoor activity with the outdoor patio space.
One of the features of this orientation is, if you'll notice, the bank of doors to the left-hand side of the main lobby pre-function space, that is a continuation of the existing mall. So as you walk up the mall towards the existing Belk Building, that is in alignment with the mall. So it'd be a continuation of that space, going all the way through the building, back to the outside, on the right-hand side of this space. And one of the ideas, go ahead, you can go to the next slide. One of our, the other way. Yeah, one of our ideas is to create a space on the outside of the building as well, that also is an extension of the agricultural and the meeting hall space, so that events and different things can spill out into that lawn area and continue the programming of the agricultural space by having a classroom, outdoor classroom, which is illustrated by that little white wedge-shaped piece right there. By doing, the way we're going to plan on doing that is to open up that wall on that side of the Belk, to create some large openings that you can have operable glass to be able to spill out on beautiful days. Take it from there.
Okay. So get you oriented back on the site. Towards the end of the package, and we'll talk about this today, is we have concepts. These are high-level design concepts. This is not set in stone, but this is an idea what the mall could look like, what the Agricultural Center could look like. We broke it up in two options. There's option one, which is kind of on the right-hand side. That entails all of the Belk exterior renovations with the existing building elevations. It also includes all brand-new parking lot. When I say new parking lot, it's really milling the existing parking lot and putting new asphalt paving, putting trees, landscaping, making it and beautifying it, making a great spot for the Agricultural Center. And option two, we looked at renovating the exterior of the mall, which would be the east entrance into the mall, where you actually have an existing water feature there, but creating this promenade drive up to a traffic circle for a traffic drop-off to get into the main entrance in the mall. We also did the same type of design to get into the meeting hall area with a traffic circle, kind of in the center space of Belk. So I'll be talking about those two things later on with the call estimate. We also, this is a 3D look at the complex, proposed complex. Like Bob was saying, there's a little pavilion here. This is the outdoor classroom space that was programmed by the Agricultural Center. This space can be used for, it's a demonstration classroom for the Agricultural Center, can also be used for like a bandstand, could be used for different events, as well as this green space area here. Another part of the program for the Agricultural Center was developing about a one-acre exterior demonstration garden. This would happen here in the existing parking lot. We would remove that parking lot and turn it over to basically demonstration garden area. Behind the demonstration garden area, there is, was requested to have a small greenhouse, as well as some exterior storage facilities for the Agricultural Center. So we would place those kind of towards the back, near their back entrance to get into their complex. We took liberty to come up with some design concepts. Again, this is a high level of looking at the facility. This is the corner of the Belk, existing Belk. We're going to keep the Belk brick as is, the brick veneer would stay. This is basically just an overlay of some multiple materials. There is white metal panel system with also a, and these are aluminum, with vertical columns that are simply just kind of fastened onto the face of the brick veneer. So we want to kind of keep the brick there. We want to see the brick throughout the space, but just basically kind of giving a new facelift. We also created this horizontal plane, which takes you to the main entrance into the community meeting room. Here's another look at it. You can start to see the high patio, covered patio, which would be for the entertaining area outside of the pre-function space.
The concept behind this canopy, if you will, is, if you'll notice in this image, how a lot of the columns aren't straight vertical. They tilt, they bend, and the idea is to create a contemporary reenactment of trees and the canopy that the trees provide. So we felt like that would be a nice contemporary way to illustrate agriculture and forestry.
And Bob's talking about kind of these, the colonnade And Bob's talking about, kind of, the colonnades are kind of on different angles. This photograph is showing you potential, the location of the entrance into the agricultural meeting hall area here with the turnaround. You can kind of start seeing the green plaza area in front of that, and then the teaching, let's say, pavilion would be on the left-hand side. This is a great shot. What Bob was talking about is showing you the columns that are kind of, again, mimicking trees, the tree canopy. You know, agriculture is all about soil, ground, teaching people, helping them into the community, and we thought this architecturally would be nice to kind of reflect what's going on from the inside to the outside of the facility. You can start to see the existing brick facade with these vertical aluminum, I'm going to say, more or less decoration on the outside of the facility, kind of give it a different rhythm. And you can see the covered patio space, as well as some of the guard space here.
One thing we also are showing on this view, you can see above on the right-hand side, is a perforated ceiling, if you will, also to simulate light coming through the trees. So we didn't want to, initially, we thought of doing the whole canopy that way, but we rethought that and decided it would be good to have a nice covered area in case of inclement weather while things, events were going on outside, a place where folks could escape without not necessarily going all the way into the building. So we kind of created the best of both worlds in that scenario.
Next slide is, I'm going to say, the kind of northeast elevation of Belk, of redesigning that facade.
Facing the parking lot.
Facing the parking lot. There's not a tenant in there yet, but someday there might be some signage on top of that canopy with the main entrance kind of in the center of the facility. Towards the left is our, again, design concept of altering the front entrance, the east entrance into the mall. And you can start to see that from this slide. It's a traffic circle as you come up. We wanted to have a place to have the flags flown here in the center of the traffic circle. You can get that better shot from this one. So you can start to see the traffic circle, you get to see the flags. You also see the memorial museum here, the sculpture area here.
As you walk in towards the entrance.
Yep, as you're walking towards, at the entrance. And then we can start to see that canopy, that same articulation that we did on the agricultural side, you start to see that same type of architecture that'd be implemented for this facade. Here's another look at it from the street side. And then, you know, having outdoor space is very important for these type of facilities. Not only you want to have interaction on the inside, but you also want to start bringing people from the outside. And so we started creating some outdoor plaza space with some hardscape, some lawn area, maybe some sculptural walls for people to sit, maybe some tables and chairs out there. Could be a cafe in this facility. Just give it some life on the outside of the facility. Last but not least, what does all this cost? We hired a cost estimator. This cost, again, is based on these elevation studies and also the floor plans that we gave our cost estimator. It's a high look at it. We broke it down by the internal renovation space, which is at the top. It's the agricultural center, office area interior renovations. It's about 17,000 square feet. It's about $168 per square foot, and it's about $2.8 million for that. The exterior storage, we talked about exterior storage, the greenhouse, and then that demonstration garden area is about 158,000, because we have some demolition on the existing asphalt to do, and they want to do some, again, have some storage facilities as well as the greenhouse. The agricultural center, the meeting area we're talking about, the interior renovations, it's 40,000, I'm sorry, 43,000 square feet, $177 per square foot, and that's at 7.6 million. So just the internal renovation would cost about $10.6 million for the internal renovation only. The next line item is the agricultural center is option one, exterior building renovations. That is where we're renovating the Belk area, as well as the parking lot, okay? So option one is the exterior building renovations, and that's at 3.5 million. The agricultural center for option one, the parking lot improvements, that's again, milling the parking lot, new landscaping, new tree islands and things like that, and that's at 1.6 million. That total equates to about 5.1 million. So if you add those both up, we're a little over $15 million just for the agricultural center. We also looked at how much would it cost just to do the main entrance to the mall.
The second phase, if you will.
Yep, yep. So it's called option two, we call that. That's where, it's called the east entrance. It's the exterior building renovations with the canopy, the sidewalks and all that, that's at 1.9 million. And then the mall entrance, option two, the exterior parking lot improvements, again, it's milling the parking lot, new curbs, the new traffic circle, flagpoles are in there, also the veterans memorials in there too, and that's at 1.2 million. So that adds up to about 3.1. So all that said and done, the interior renovations, getting new life to the West End Plaza at the Belk, also at the east entrance, we're looking at about $18.9 million project. That's just construction costs. That does include escalation, second quarter of 2020. It does not include owner soft costs, it does not include FFNE, it does not include designer fees and all that. If you did all, if you did all include that, that adds another about 15 to 20% to the construction cost.
And with that, we'll answer any questions you may have.
So just curious, the, I guess the meeting area, the meeting area is 177 a square foot. Is, I mean, I would assume that...
This area here?
What's that?
Yes.
Yeah, so, I'm just curious, I mean, seems like a lot of that's open space. Why would that be more than? I mean, I'm not...
Well, you're going to get a higher level finishes in your pre-function space. You'll get the higher level finishes in the restrooms. Restrooms, you know, they're an expensive unit, something you have to have here. So restrooms always cost a lot. Kitchen, although this is programmed to be mainly a catering-type warming kitchen, not a full-equipped commercial kitchen, still, the types of equipment that you'll need, that's expensive too. Although I know it doesn't include the equipment costs, but the tile, the plumbing, the electrical, everything that you'll need to include in that is also an expensive piece. The divider walls, those aren't inexpensive at all, and they will require some additional structural steel to support those, which you currently do not have. And then you'll want some upgraded finishes on your floors and so forth, because it'll be a high-trafficed area. So that's generally why that number is considered to be a little higher.
Are the ceilings higher in that space?
Yeah, that's what's nice about the Belk. The Belk's about a story and a half. The back part of Belk is actually a mezzanine, and right now, we left the mezzanine intact because it has HVAC. It also has electrical rooms up there, and we don't want to, we want to reuse as much as we can and just keep the mezzanine in place. But that's what's nice about the agricultural meeting area, is because you do get a story and a half in that area. Where the agricultural office is gone, it's only a story. So it does make sense to put the offices over there. You don't need as much height.
So in this photo, it looks like columns stay?
Correct.
Yep.
Yeah, we're not, at this point, we're not proposing moving any of the existing structure, because that would be very, very costly. Anything could be done, but the idea is to try to manipulate the space and the sightlines by situating where you might have a presentation platform between the columns, and then orienting your seating arrangements per that layout. And we've talked about, we're not illustrating anything in this, but we've talked about ways to do that and to make it work effectively.
So you said it would seat 1,000. That's, well, you said 1,000, but that's tabled, I believe.
Tables and chairs. Tables and chairs.
And keep in mind, I don't know if we made enough of the point about this, this is really only effectively half of the existing Belk space. This shot that we're showing this plan on, right below the main lobby pre-function space, you have an equal amount of space that is roughly the same size. So that could be flex space, that could be more meeting area or more function space. Really, it's left, you know, flexible at this point.
So in the meeting area, is, this price include, so everything would include like a sound system, the lighting and all that, or is that...
Lighting, yes. But soft costs generally include, are not included in this price is any AV that you have, any of the equipment for the kitchen, furniture, any of your consulting fees, those kind of things are not included in this number.
I know this is looking down the road, but what type of lighting do you recommend for a large conference room like that?
You want some, you want some very generous ambient lighting, much like you have in this big room here. You've got these nice fixtures above. You want to continue to have that type of ambient lighting and create that. Accent lighting along the walls are always good as part of that ambient lighting, but in terms of what you do from there, it really kind of depends on the events. So that's a process that we go through in talking about the types of spaces that you want to create in these areas, and we would design the lighting to those needs.
Okay, great. Thanks.
So the changes in the parking lots, how, does that reduce a lot of parking?
Yeah, it would definitely reduce some of the parking. One of the things we were conscious of, and the many times we've visited out there, is it's pretty much a racetrack out there right now, and people are driving across aisles, and there seems to be no directed flow of traffic. And what we wanted to do is create the islands and redo the striping and create some sidewalks that lead through the parking towards the buildings themselves to help slow down the traffic. One of the things we didn't mention is, we were also wanting to incorporate into the program a drop-off point for mass transit as part of this program. So that would be probably, I guess, what do you call that, the south corner of the Belk area?
Yeah.
Yeah. Just before you got to that roundabout. But the idea is to redesign that parking area to slow down the traffic. That will net redo some of the parking, but I think you're going to have more than enough parking for the program space.
Yeah, I have had, I've had comments on the Veterans Coffee's meeting out there, and someone almost got ran over by people just flying through the middle of the parking So where would, there's some veteran parking now where specific signs are up, where would you think that would go?
On this...
That's a good spot, right?
Yeah, on that spot right there. Kind of those three white cars closest to the entrance. We could, we could reserve, you know, put the signs up for the veterans. Definitely could do that.
Or as many spaces as you needed. The idea behind the circle is, because that's such a major entrance, we wanted to make sure we slowed the traffic down at that spot. A lot of people are coming and going in that spot specifically. So by creating this, and, you know, again, this is a high-level concept, it may not be quite, may not need to be quite that large, but we wanted to do something to help slow that traffic down, especially right there.
So it looks, unless it's not the scale, but the other circle is not as big as this circle? Or is it just...
That's correct. Like Bob was saying, this one's probably a little bit too big. We were thinking that you might have some more buses in here than...
They need a little bit bigger turning radius and so forth.
Yeah.
So back to where the bathrooms are. So I guess the way that they're set up, that they could be used, or, so can these rooms, will they have sort of, they're able to be secured where you could use the bathrooms there without using any of the other rooms if there's other things? They've talked about doing some car shows or things out in the parking lot, and so they could come in, use the restrooms, but not have access to the other areas with the, I guess, be sealed off.
Yes. Yes, pretty much all the conference rooms along that area can have lockable hardware on it. The bathrooms generally are push-pools, no lockable hardware, and then just all the other rooms around that could have lockable hardware on there. So you could isolate just the main hall and pre-function spaces and the restrooms itself. There'll also be plenty of wayfinding signs throughout this facility so that people can find their way easily.
So we met a couple weeks ago and looked at, some of this has been revised. One thing that you did not have when we met a little earlier was the traffic circle at the mall entrance along with...
Correct.
The exterior renovations there in the center.
Correct.
So that's added, what, another 3 million to it?
Correct. As an option, it's optional. I mean, in our opinion, it's not necessary to the program of the Ag Center itself, but it's something that we felt like, because of the nature of people coming to this facility to visit specifically the Ag Center, more than likely, they're going to be coming in that east entrance, or what you're calling the east entrance. And therefore, we wanted to show what that might look like if we carried that same vernacular over to that area. Again, it's something as an option, it's a sort of a second option, and we wanted to isolate that cost out separately from the rest of it, so you could kind of see what that would be.
Because that's a big chunk, and then we need to add to that for...
Soft costs.
Furniture, sound equipment. So, Mr. Manager and friends, so we've got, we've got some money budgeted for West End Plaza for renovations. What does that, what does that look like? And they come to us with a project like this, and we can't have everything we want.
Yeah, we currently have about 1.5 million residing in the fund that's unallocated. And the amount, the budget amount to be moved to West End Plaza Fund in 2020 is roughly 1.3 million. So that will be in addition to what the cash that's already sitting in the fund.
The first number you said?
Roughly 1.5 million.
1.5 plus another 1.2.
And since we've been doing, you know, each year, we're adding to it. Next year, the Grants Creek...
Town Creek.
Town Creek sewer comes off, and we had planned to budget 1.4 million, or 1.4 and a half million for next year, so you would have at least that much reserve for debt service.
Correct.
You know, if you did a 15-year, you would have at least 1.44 million already budgeted next year to pay the debt service on a building like this for 15 years, and then a down payment of, well, it would be the 2 point, about 2.8, if you wanted to use what's in reserves.
Does that include the, was it 400 or 600,000 that's been going in and out there every year since we bought it into that fund?
Yeah.
Leslie, what's the current debt remaining on the West End Plaza purchase?
Leslie, what's the current debt remaining on the West End Plaza purchase?
Um, I don't actually have, one second, I'll find that. That, the current debt will be paid off in 2025, and the, the amount per year is about 450,000 currently.
What's the balance? What do we owe?
This is principal and interest is 2.5 million.
So we've got enough with what's coming online that we just pay it off?
Yeah.
That's kind of where I'm looking at. I'd rather pay it off and then do the improvements.
That's what I'd rather do.
We will, once, once we make the transfer in this new fiscal year, we could do that. I, I do have to go back and look at the loan covenant, covenants to see about prepayment penalties.
That would throw another 400,000 into debt service for the remodel.
So what, 20 million's about 1.8? Is that right? To borrow 20 million?
Um, I, I usually look at it as over 15 years, that'd be about 2 million a year.
Yeah, it's all right, it's close.
For 15 years, if you did 20, if you borrowed 20 million for 15 years, an interest rate that's between 4 and 5%, it might get that better because I think rates are...
Are down.
Going to have a downturn somewhat.
Gentlemen, let me ask you a question, because I'm, I'm all about paying as you go, that's just me. What type of negative impact would it have on the construction costs for the agricultural center if the office renovations were done and then we came back and did the meeting room?
As...
They don't, since they're not contiguous, you know, not the same building...
Right.
Could, you know, our biggest concern right now is the office space for the Ag building so that we can move 911 into that space.
Sure.
So, so I guess what I'm saying, if, if we took this as a piece and said, okay, we're going to provide office space for our employees first...
Sure.
I don't see that there's a whole lot of overlap in coming back and doing the meeting space separately after that's completed.
Right, the, the only thing that, as far as a cost standpoint, sure, I mean, I'm sure you understand that the longer you wait and have to re- remobilize, that does drive the costs up a little bit. Now, we did build in some contingency for inflation as part of these costs into...
Escalation.
Their second quarter or third quarter next year?
Second quarter, 2020.
Second quarter next year. But having said that, the only part, that's, would be the only impact to answer your question. One thing to understand though is we did move some of the program space that the...
Cooperative extension.
Cooperative extension wanted in their space into that larger box. So maybe a little bit of construction in there that we might do.
Well, well, I realize that some of the, some of the work that could be done in preparing the meeting room, like the plumbing...
Sure.
And the electrical, and even maybe the HVAC could be in conjunction with the, the office space, but I'm just saying, because we're not really changing the exterior walls, it's just mainly interior work, I just want to make sure that by doing the office renovations first, it wouldn't have a big negative impact on that other room.
Now, the way we, way we've got it isolated in the plan, we, we've kind of built in so it has its own entrance, its own lobby area, and all of those departments work off that lobby area, which is right off the existing mall.
Okay.
So yeah, as long as you have access to the mall, you could do that.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
But, piggyback on that, so if you look at the blue, I guess it's page 2, page 2. So Craig, you're talking about completing the buildings, the rooms along the wall there to the left?
What I'm saying is the actual office area where we're going to move the four departments.
Yeah.
Correct. Go ahead and complete that and then move into the... Space there for the meeting area, it could be done separately.
Yeah, but you're talking, were you talking about also completing the classrooms along the wall in the Belks area?
No, that, that would, that would have to go once you came inside that area. Because of the way it's laid out, you, you don't want to have just come in there and petition off some walls and then the rest of the room not be finished.
Right. Well, the only, and I don't say that's not a bad idea, it's just I don't, we'd have to see from them because I don't know that there's any areas in this dark blue that are as big as the area that they have now for, is there?
As a temporary patch, we haven't finished the event center that's 100 feet away from the doorway to this building that they're talking about renovating. I mean, for a temporary time, they could set up in there like we've done for the company picnic and everything else. I mean, there's a way to accommodate until we can get the finances in line to do this thing, so.
Where are you talking about?
JCPenney building.
I mean, yeah, but I don't think that...
Not trying to say that's a permanent location, I'm just saying that...
If they're going to have the beekeepers, they don't need 33,000 square feet to have a beekeepers meeting, but I think they need a room bigger than anything that's in here. Maybe there's another suite.
There's, there's other space out of West End that we could be renovated for, for that smaller area, but I don't want to spend the money just for one occasional event.
No, well, my point was, I don't, I think they do need some of that area for, when they have meetings. And I think some of the, the idea was they wanted to be able to have, if they wanted to have a beekeeper meeting and a cattlemen's meeting at the same time, they would have space. Right now, they only have one room, and then they also have to share that with emergency services.
Well, there's adjacent, there's an adjacent building or, or space, I should say, right next to what, that building used to be Shoe Show, there's the available space right next door that's 5,000 square feet, all you got to do is put some flooring down and paint it.
Yeah, no, but my point was, I don't think we want to send them out there to, to be in the JCPenney's for these, for their smaller, smaller groups.
But I mean, there are other ways to, to skin the cat, so to speak, and I'm just looking at the most cost-effective way. I'm not against the plan, I'm just against that much money all at one time...
Oh, no, you're...
Because we're putting out money for the schools that same year, if I'm not mistaken, to the tune of $60 million, and we just passed $7.1 million tonight. I mean, at some point in time, the well's going to go dry, and I would just rather take a, a glass of water out than a whole bucket right now.
Well, fortunately, we've budgeted all this and we're working towards, so, like I said, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying, I'm just saying that these are not, if we do it in paying off the mall, that, that's going to just delay it a little bit, but I think that's not necessarily a bad idea to do that. But are you saying, go ahead and, and before we pay the mall off, start on the, the office area?
Well, I, I would have to, to yield to Leslie to see what the interest rate was when we borrowed the money to purchase the West End Plaza, what that interest rate is. If it's over 2.02%, it might be wise to go ahead and borrow the money for this and use that money for the debt service. I, I don't have enough information here to form an opinion, is what I'm saying. I mean, I appreciate what you guys have done, that's not what I'm saying, but we're looking at how we're going to pay for it, and that's information I don't have.
The interest rates themselves are downstairs in a book.
Well, and I'm not saying we have to make the decision right now, I'm just saying, I'd want to compare paying off the West End Plaza, if that's a higher interest rate, I think that would be the way to go, then borrow this money at 2.02%. If, if...
Some of the differences are going to be that this is going 15 years, and, and also with this, I think we'll run into what we did before where we'll have a taxable portion and a tax-exempt portion, and the taxable portion is a higher interest rate on the loan. We actually do two separate loans, one taxable and one not, and we split it based on square footage for our departments versus if, if any would be taxable, I'm not sure at this moment, I mean, it's the first time I've seen this.
I, I think to answer one of the questions is though, whether the, what's owed on the West End Plaza is paid off or not, there's debt capacity that we've budgeted that can pay for this. So the, based on the way we've been budgeting, there is, well, pay for the 15 million, not necessarily the, the new, the new 19 million dollar number, but there is, there is debt capacity to pay for up to approximately, you think 15, I mean, 15 million. Now, you do have in the current budget, you've got 600,000 for the library, which is a one-time expense, and what's the 800 for the EMS, so, I mean, you've got, there, there is money available if you wanted to go to the, from the 15 million to the 19 million.
Well, Mr. Manager, I'll remind you that we had a meeting today out the airport that's going to be looking at some debt service too. So, so what I'm saying is, I would really like to sit down, if we have to have a work session, and look at all the projects that we have started, that we have not finished, the projects that are coming down in the future that we have made basically verbal commitments on, and then see where that leaves us as far as the capacity to borrow any more money. And I don't want to get too far out there because we're fortunate, the economy's good right now, but we don't know how long that's going to be like that. And I certainly don't want to take on this long-term debt service and I have to pay that debt by letting employees go. So, so I've got that concern too.
Leslie, I've got a question. What was the original purchase price on the West End Plaza?
3.4.
But we did something else for 500,000 because I, I'm pretty sure the loan amount was 3,900,000.
Yeah, we added some, we added some for repairs, but then what never, nobody ever talks about is how much rent rolls were coming in off that project too, from the long-term commitments that Belks and JCPenney had made, and they had to continue to pay that debt, their leases until they were paid out. So when you get right down to it, I calculated it one day, it was like 2.3 million dollars is actually what we had in it by the time we collected the rents.
And the balance is 2.6? For West End Plaza? Did I understand that correctly?
I, I don't think so. Let me get back to that. I left that up. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, it, it's 2,540,000.
And that included the money we borrowed for the repairs when we purchased it.
Excuse me?
I said, that includes the money we borrowed for repairs when we purchased it because we had to put a roof on sections of it.
So, and, so we have 1.5 million in that account now? Was that, was that the number? Is that right?
Yes.
And then... This year is an additional 1 point?
1.3 million.
1.3. So this should be 2.8 at the end of this year?
Yes.
For July of next year. So really, if we wanted to pay it off, we could plan on paying it off this year because this is going to take probably a whole year for we even could start any of this, this project, I guess.
And, and one of the ways that I look at capital projects is that if you're doing the planning this year, you know, we, that's great because we'd be ready to roll at the beginning of the following year.
And Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say that with Mr. Green on a well-deserved vacation, I'd rather have all five commissioners vote on doing anything that we're going to do that necessitates borrowing money and it's long-term debt service as opposed to just four of us. So, you know, if we, if we need to have a workshop, we need to have a planning session, whatever, I think we'd probably behoove ourselves to, to look at this information, to get, gather the other information that we're asking about that we don't have at our fingertips, but we do know, and put it all together to kind of get a game plan of where we want to be by the time this all comes down.
Yeah, I think, you know, having heard in comments that all four of us here support this project and that, you know, Jim's not here, I like the idea of paying this off this year, but I'm more, is there a way that we can still work on the planning of this so we can have it ready to go?
Sure.
At the next fiscal year? And I don't know how, how that would, I guess I'm curious how that would work, what do we?
Well, I, I think what we need to see is what are, what, what's going to be taken down over the next three years of debt service that we have that'll go away, then we can get a better idea of what we can do here.
Well, the, yeah, but the 1.8 million is already, I believe, allotted where it has to be used at West End Plaza, we can't use that money other places. So that's a revenue stream for here. So I, I agree with you that maybe we should have a work session to talk about the overall capital projects of the county, but if we're going to do some in the airport, I don't think that necessarily affects West End Plaza because we can't use that money from West End Plaza at the airport unless we change the ordinance.
Yeah, but we put that money in the budget for West End Plaza and it comes out of sales tax and, and property tax revenues.
We can have a vote to change the ordinance and then we won't have those funds going into the West End Plaza fund anymore. But until we do that, I mean, those monies are...
That's a discussion for another day, I think we need to...
Those monies are for West End Plaza, so, I like the idea, like I said, I like the idea of being able to pay off the mall at the end of this year, but I don't want to wait, I don't want to wait and start this process all over next July 1st.
Well, I think we can be in the planning stages as we move forward and, and, you know, we still got to go out for bid. I mean, these are not...
Right, right.
Hard prices, these are cost-effective estimates.
And I think if we are going to do it, we need to go ahead and do, do it all at once because, I mean, I don't know why you would not do all the options and then have it half-done and then never get it completed, and then it's going to look odd.
Well, like I said, I'm just a pay-as-you-go kind of guy, it's just the way I like to do things. Then that way, I'm not tying future boards to debt that they didn't vote on, I'm not looking at, economy takes a downturn and I got to start laying off employees, I don't want to do that.
Well, you know, I agree with that, but you do, we've done school debt, that was 15 years, so, I mean, we have done that before.
Didn't like it, but yeah, I did it.
Well, here we are, four or five years, six years later, and we knew this day was coming. So we, we shouldn't be surprised that we're ready to do something. Some say it's past due, some say, well, we should wait longer. You know, if, if we're going to own this facility, which, then, then we need to do, we need to do something with it. You know, one thing that's not been mentioned is, and maybe it hasn't, I missed it, but this opens up a lot of opportunity over on Old Concord Road at the emergency services, so Ag and all these folks share a building with emergency services, and as weather events happen, Ag has to empty out rooms and then they have to set up an emergence, I don't know, what do they call that? It's like an emergency response center.
EOC.
EOC, and our IT folks roll in there and they, they put all of this temporary stuff in there to, to have a response center for emergencies. We had the hurricane coming through here and some of us spent some time up there helping answering phones and, and really just supporting our, our emergency workers. So this will help, help them get the room that they need that, that is kind of long overdue. One, one thing that I certainly like about the project is that the, the meeting hall really provides two things. Number one, it provides space for the Ag folks that are traditionally found in agriculture centers. The other thing it does is it provides space for the community. We hear a lot of different businesses talking about the, the need for space, that's a, that's a good thing, it's a big thing. We, in the last four or five years, man, we have spent just a tremendous amount of money in maintenance and getting the county to a point of, I know, I know one time we talked about how many acres... talked about how many acres of roofing we have done in the past few years, it's acres and acres of roofs. And so when we sit down every year to do a budget, I, I get a little depressed at times because there's still maintenance we have to do, and every year I, I think, man, when are we going to turn the corner on this? We've done so much maintenance work, and, you know, we'd like to see some stuff going up that the community can kind of really celebrate, you know? It's like putting brakes on, on your car, you know, there's, yeah, it's good to get stopped in traffic, but putting a new roof on a house or putting brakes on a car, that's just not exciting. And so we've been looking forward to a, a time when we can see some, some things go up that the community could say, hey, this is really exciting and there's some progress going. So to me, the agricultural meeting hall meets two demands, and one is it provides a great space for our Ag folks, but it also provides some space for the community as well that I think they'd be excited about. So, you know, we, we either move forward on this or we go backward on it, and I don't think the community wants to go backwards. I agree that I don't think we have all the information we need tonight to move forward. I think we ought to set a time where we could come in here, we'll call it a special meeting if we like. We can come in, we can have our friends back, I think their car works on autopilot now between Charlotte and here. But, you know, I'd like us to make a decision on this and move on and commit. I do appreciate, I know Commissioner Caskey has had some great recommendation over the past few years about getting ready for this point. Our finance folks and county manager have put funds aside so that when we got to this point, we would have the, the vast, vast, vast majority of debt service already budgeted in this. And so that's, that's really a, a very positive thing here. So we're, we're just about ready for this. If we wanted to go the full tilt, I don't know that we're ready for that yet. But if we did, if we did three-quarters of it, we could do that today, and we, we have, we have money budgeted for that. So, does anyone have anything else they want to add?
Yeah. You know, I like Craig's idea of having maybe a work session or something particularly about this, and that was one of the things that way back when we purchased the mall that some people said they needed to be more community input from it. Maybe we can have a work session out at the mall, and they can bring some fancy photos out there, and we can put up and invite the public out to see some, some of it and see what it looks like, because I think there's still, because people don't go out there a lot anymore because there's not a lot out there, that it's a rundown, broken-up building, but when you go out there, you're going to see all, all the upkeep that we've done to it and the maintenance that we've done to it, and it's, it's a great, it's a great project, a great building, and, you know, I think we can get some people out there to see actually what, what could be out there. So I would just suggest if we're going to do a work session on this, that maybe we could have it out there and invite the community to come out and look around a little bit.
Might be a good idea, and y'all could put these on some boards for us.
Yep.
Yeah, so we'll work with the county manager and reach out to you guys and see if we can come up with a time.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Sounds like fun.
Time and a date. You know, we're, seem to be kind of past the, there was, this was such a big deal a few years ago. And I know, what, what we tried to talk about is don't think about what the facility is as it sits, think about what it can be for the community, what, what the potential is, and the potential is fantastic.
Yeah.
So, and again, having space like this opens us up to being able to do a whole lot of things in this community that we're, we currently don't have the space for. Still talking with the school system about some different things, and, you know, if you had a big space like this, you know, begin to think, community college and school system, who could we attract to this community with space like this? And so those are things we continue to talk about. Anything else?
The feedback I've been getting is, when are we going to do something?
Yeah.
What are you going to do? And, you know, I keep telling people when we have the money, but I'm glad that we are at least exploring ahead and looking at design. I would suggest that we have a working meeting out there on Monday, July the twenty-second, unless somebody's going to be on vacation.
Just go ahead and get it on the calendar.
Lizzy's going to be on vacation? No, that's right. What about the next week? Okay, twenty-ninth then.
July twenty-ninth?
That's my birthday, I ain't gonna be there on my birthday.
Oh, come on.
Cool. I got Bible school on the twenty-ninth.
Bible school?
Uh, the next would be August fifth.
That's when a regular meeting is?
Oh, is it a regular meeting?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, maybe that's the best thing, is just to meet before we go into regular session.
Mike, you got to work that night?
Um, the fifth? I don't know, that's in the future, I can't, can't remember that far ahead, probably, but I can, I can make it work out, though. If we want to do something on the fifth. There's nothing in my phone right now, so I could do something.
One o'clock?
Is that enough time?
Right there.
So that would be out there?
Works for us. Well, if you want to have people, citizens show up, you probably want to have it after the meeting, wouldn't you?
That would make more sense, because people'd be off work.
After, okay.
So August fifth, we'd have a three PM meeting, so then be open over there after that?
Yeah, just keep the agenda short.
All right, August fifth?
Yeah.
Plan for that?
The other thing I just wanted to mention, too, is I understand and, and agree with Craig that, you know, just like our home budgets, you know, it's pay-as-you-go. But I also understand how critical it is for the Ag Center to get this work done, and the, that parking lot is incredibly dangerous. I've been almost hit several times. Thankfully, I was in my car, but, but, yeah, there's no real, real place that you can walk or have a clear lane to be driving, so I would like to see this done as soon as we can, but I think that having that working session and looking at our debt is a good idea, too.
Think activity will create activity. There's not a lot going on out there because there's not a lot going on out there. I know we were talking about the Idea Center out there, that's a whole other story, but they were concerned about, you know, the, the mall just does, it doesn't have anything going on out there, we're concerned about attracting people. So creating activity will create activity, and I think it'll just get better as it goes along. So, you know, we, we got to do one thing or the other, I'm sure this will make the paper. We, we either need to get going on it or not get going on it and do something different with it. So you, you guys purchased it, and so we need to make the best of it, and let's move ahead and create a really great asset for, for this community, and create some great activity on that side of town, and draw Cleveland and all that this way. So, all right, guys, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Good to see y'all again. Drive safely.
All right, thank you.
All right, item number eight, Aaron.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, do, do we need to make a motion to call for that meeting?
I don't know. Jay?
What do we need to do?
We're just going to, uh-
It's not going to be a continuing issue.
We just recess and continue the meeting out there?
I assume you're just going to recess from here and move to a new location? Is that?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we can recess here, I think we just need to specially advertise it, though. I think we should just let people know that there's going to be a, a separate one out there, we, we can begin the meeting here and recess it and move out there. We've got some logistics depending on how you guys want to handle it out there, but we've got electronic issues that we need to take care of, and Carolyn says we might not be able to video, videotape it, but I think we do have access to have mobile audio and things like that out there for a meeting.
We have our meeting here, and we just open that venue up out there for folks to look at what they're going to bring, and then we could have a work session here, maybe later that week, that's Monday, so maybe Tuesday, we could, you know, at nine o'clock, or I don't know, whatever works best for, for him. I think it's a little awkward to have a work session out there, isn't it?
I'm, I'm not disagreeing, and I like the idea of it being recorded, so if there's ever anything said that the post prints wrong, we, we have documentation that we, that we didn't say that, so.
You, you could have an open house, you could have an open house, and, and the commissioners could actually be present for that, as long as you don't discuss any, any business, and then bring all that back to, bring that back to a working session at a later date.
I would feel better getting some public input, just because they're the ones that's going to pay for it, we're not, and just see what their ideas are. If they're, if they're all for this, then I'm, I'm good. If they're not for it, then we need to discuss it a little more.
So what date did we pick? August?
August fifth is our meet, is our meeting.
Oh, that's twenty-twenty, I'm sorry. August fifth. So we, we don't necessarily tonight need to make the decision.
We don't have another meeting till then, so.
No, that's true. Well, we could just call a special meeting.
Well, I'd like for these guys to be prepared, too, so.
Uh, do, do you want to look at this, that week, the sixth, seventh, or eighth, for a, a work session for us?
Well, I thought we were going to do open house. Oh, you want to do something separate? I mean, we-
Yeah.
Well, why couldn't we just talk about it at our Monday meeting and then have the open house? Or you want the open house before we? I guess you want the open house first.
Yeah, so we'd have regular meeting here at three o'clock, then we'd move over to the plaza for open house, and then later that week, we would come together to discuss the-
Oh, I got you. So that meeting could be anytime then, right?
Yes.
Or the eighth or ninth.
Eighth or ninth?
For me?
Oh.
Have an open house, or have an open house after the meeting, and then then have a special work session back here.
Come back here.
A different day, that week.
Well, that's, eighth is a Thursday.
So we don't, we don't necessarily need to decide that right here, do we?
Yeah.
We, we can, Mike, why don't you check your schedule, and we'll work around you, and then we can just have the clerk-
Well, I don't want to have it on a Friday night.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Well, I think the open house is still going to be on Monday, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're just talking about when we're going to have a meeting here, yeah.
Work session. So we'll coordinate that with Mike, and then you can do a announcement, Carolyn. Is that okay? All right, we'll move on then.
Forty-eight hours.
Yeah, forty-eight hours.
Pardon, you still want us to come for the August fifth open house?
Yes.
It'd be nice in case people have questions that we can't answer, so we're not standing around saying, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, because we've been saying that for three years.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Aaron, task orders.
Doug, task orders. We want to make a quick update on the Julian Road Convenience Center and road project. This, this project seems to be growing as time goes along. We added the convenience center some time back. The task orders that you have before you, one of those is to include the color renderings that, that I'm going to show you tonight, the other one is to add water and sewer along that roadway to serve parcels. Let me skip to the next slide. If you'll look, this is where the proposed road is planned, that has been designed, we've gotten approvals, I think the final sign-off from DOT is forthcoming, so that part will be ready to go to bid. The convenience center is under design, so that what we want to do is bid all of that work at the same time. In looking at the new animal facility, the discussion was getting water and sewer to that and creating a parcel that could be sold or used for other things along the front that the county purchased. So in doing so, we looked at adding water along this proposed road and sewer along the proposed road. Sewer, let's see, will the arrow, there's a sewer line here now, you see that clearing? And that is how sewer gets to the existing animal facility, it crosses right in that area. And then water is provided there by a well. So what we're proposing is tying on to this sewer line and extending it up to get to this point, to be able to serve the frontage along Julian Road, and then a water line that would extend all the way through this proposed roadway. The, this is a rendering of what the convenience site would look like. There's a number of drop wall boxes and some surface space boxes, along with an attendance building and place for parking. Give you a perspective from different, a few different locations, this is looking at it from the proposed road, but, but up higher, it will have fencing and sight lighting to match the surrounding area, and it's landscaping as well. We are planning a site buil- building for that attendant shelter with a restroom, and it's just looking at it from a few different angles. So that's the quick version, I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
My only question is where it says existing animal control, when, when I've met with the shelter guardians and, and the benefactors, they were wanting it where the existing convenience center was, the new dog adoption center, not beside of here.
Well, the, the black box that's on there is actually an, one of the existing buildings, that's not the proposed building.
Okay, well, it says existing, and I take that as everything that's already there. Yeah, is that the Catwing?
Yeah, but that, that's, that black box is one of the existing buildings that's out there.
So that's the old animal control?
Yes.
And then the black one is the Catwing that was built by Ms. Maricots? Okay, all right, just want to make sure we're proceeding correctly.
Yeah, we don't have the new, the new animal building's not shown on this site plan, that's being handled by their architect.
But we would want to make sure as we're running these, the infrastructure in, that we have a way for them to get water and sewer.
Yes, that's what we're doing.
Okay, all right, just want to make sure.
All right, so what we're being asked to do is approve task order eleven and twelve.
Okay.
So we have a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Second.
Any other questions for Doug? Good to see you again, Doug, thank you for traveling. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number nine, Commissioner Pierce.
Commissioners, I'm requesting that we use Morgan Architecture for our kitchen design out at Ellis Park. I have worked with this young lady on a couple of different projects, including the Ruffey Homes outfit, as well as she was nice enough when Ruffey Homes was considering going to West End Plaza. She met us out there, went through the, the different options that were available, expressed a lot of genuine concern that we ended that project like it needed to be, and charged us nothing. She, she's worked for KKA Architect for a long time, and I would like to, to give her an opportunity to do something like this, mainly because she is small, she works by herself, and this kitchen doesn't require, nothing against Bill Bergen or, or Pete Bogal, but this is just way below where they would normally want to be on a project. So I'd like to give her an opportunity to get into the mix of our architectures that we're using to do all our county properties, so I'm asking you to consider that and to enter into a contract with the county manager and her to go ahead and move forward on this project.
We're good with that, Jay and Aaron? All right, make that as a motion?
So moved.
All right, I'll second it. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioners.
All right, next item, voting, when is August twenty-second through twenty-fourth? Voting delegate for the annual conference, you like to do those, don't you?
Not anymore, she's been there, she's- Not anymore. She's been there enough.
Oh, really? Guilford County.
Guilford County.
North Carolina Association of County Commissioners hold its 112th Annual Conference. Wish Jim was here, we could ask him. That's true.
Well, he was at the first one, wasn't he?
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, I know.
It's a little joke. All right, does anyone want to attend this and represent the county?
I'll do it now that I'm retired, I got time.
You're the man. All right, I make a motion that we empower Commissioner Pierce to represent us at the NCACC 112th Annual Conference.
Second.
Yeah, say it quick. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Well done. Thank you, Craig, for doing that.
Guilford County, I can drive home.
Yeah, hopefully.
Maybe not, depends on how long they stay.
Yeah. All right, board appointments. Let me group these together. So Adult Care Home Advisory Committee, James Emmett, has applied for reappointment for a three-year term. The Cleveland Community VFD Board of Trustees, Greg Summitt, applied to fill a vacancy. And JCPC, Beth Fister, applied for reappointment to a two-year term. Do we have a motion to approve those three?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
William Walker, applied for reappointment to the JCPC, but he's served two terms. So we would need to waive the term limits established in a resolution adopted by the boards. Do we have a motion to waive that for William Ryan Walker?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Do we have a motion to approve Ryan Walker to that JCPC council?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Miller Ferry Volunteer Fire Department, Fire Commissioners, Ron Fronberger and Ronald... Rick Fronberger and Ronald Price are eligible for reappointment and have applied. On the Personnel Commission, Joy Constantino Kidd has applied to fill a vacancy on the Personnel Commission. The Region F Aging Advisory Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee, Juanita Woods, has applied for reappointment as an alternate member for a one-year term. And Kina Jackson was appointed in 2019 to fill the remainder of a previous member's term. She is eligible for reappointment as a delegate for a two-year term. And so do we have a motion to approve all of those?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Union Volunteer Fire Department, Walter Darrell Eliam, Doug Poole, and Cecil Whitley have applied to fill three-year commissioner vacancies. Motion to approve those?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And Rowan County, we have 33 openings. We would ask you to get involved in your local county boards. Go on to rowanc.com? Org, Rowan. I just pull it up and it automatically pops up. But go on to Rowan County's website and look at board vacancies and find something that interests you and contact us, and we would love to put you to work. Is this something I need?
Yeah, it's a closed session.
Okay. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I forgot all about that. Okay, so the last item is we have a closed session.
Rescue Squad, Ben Power.
Yeah, really? Oh, man, yeah, sure. Sorry, I know. All right, item 11A, Commissioner Caskey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think all of you received this information by email, and then also they should have got a packet today. I'll just go over some of the highlights of some of the restructuring that the Rescue Squad Board recommended. One would be the restructuring of the membership board. This will be on page two, I guess. As you see, there'll be four members from the county, five members from the Rescue Squad Board. A couple of the changes that the county will appoint the telecommunication chief as one of the automatic appointments. Under the Rescue Squad side, you know, we met with the fire chiefs and we asked them if they would be interested in having representatives. So they will appoint... Or the Rescue Squad will appoint a fire chief, since they are a stakeholder that utilizes the Rescue Squad services quite often, will be a member. Also, change where you can only have one Rescue Squad officer on the board and one member. Those will be appointed by the Rescue Squad membership. What else we got here? So the board responsibilities, if you look in the section there, kind of restructured more of an overall direction of the squad, more than... A lot of it was left to the chief position before. Significant budget transactions, that was already in place. We're gonna work on updating the bylaws and the SOGs. Also, there's a handbook that we've been working on a while that'll be approved. And one of the big things is the creation of a Director of Administrations. This will be an county employee who will work... It'll be a county employee, but he'll work... Or he or she will work at the Rescue Squad, not as full-time, but as time needed. And what they'll do is sort of be the overall administrative duties, make sure that everything's up to date as far as licenses and those sort of things. Make sure that the bills are paid, they're paid on time. You know, funds need to be moved around from accounts. They'll let the board know to move... That they need to move funds from one thing, one place to the other. Kind of keep track of HR issues, such as keeping track of vacation time or comp time, those kind of things. Just things that you would normally do if you're gonna do the administration part of the job. Chief is gonna be a volunteer position, it won't be a paid position anymore. His job's gonna be to be the chief over the volunteers. He would take operation point on scenes, you know, decide what him and his officers would, you know, do the training, decide what kind of training they need, those sort of things. So any kind of issues that squad members may have, they don't have to... They can go up to the chain of command, but if they don't find resolution and they feel like that there's an issue, they can appeal it over to go through the board and through this administrative position, so the board can hear it, so that gives them more of a way for people to appeal things. Also, we've adopted a nepotism policy. If you want to look through there, it has it written here. But it says, "Two members of immediate family should not be employed full or part-time with the department. The term immediate family shall be understood to refer to the degree of closeness to or relationship which was suggested problem may be created within the department or where there is a possible conflict of interest." There's some more there, but I'll let you... That's the basis of it, so you won't, you know, have a chief and his family members working there, he or she's family members.
Excuse me, Mike, can I ask you a question on the nepotism clause? Does that include the volunteers, that they can't be family members?
No, they can't be a...
Just a paid employee?
Can't be a paid employee and can't be over the... Well, you can have volunteers. As you can see to the bottom, it says, "In the event the chief has a family member that is a volunteer, that volunteer would be assigned to another chief officer for any disciplinary issues that arise."
Okay.
So we kind of looked at it. This is a transition year for the squad. As we go through some of these changes over this year, there's some things that we want to look at as far as reducing, you know, equipment we may not need. Right now, we've directed the staff to go through and see what items we may have, we may not need, things that may be just stored and that we don't need. We have a building in Rockwell that I think we're looking at. Do we need that building? Some of the things that are in there, we may not use, so we're gonna try to put those other places. If... Get rid of them if we don't need them, or if it's something we need, store them somewhere else to save money. This year, as far as the budget, TJ's here, can answer any budget questions that you may have. But this year, we'd like to keep the county funding with what we've already allotted from last year, the same, which I think the manager put in the budget. And our goal is to be able to, next year, reduce the amount from the county, if possible, through some of the changes. At some point through this year, we're gonna try to work at the county, I think, taking... Or starting to do the EMS peak time that's in China Grove. Rescue Squad works that now, and we're trying to switch that back to the county at some point during the year. So that's kind of the gist of it. Like I said, this is sort of a transitional year, so, you know, if we see some things that aren't working, then we can go ahead and adjust those. And then when we get here this time next year, hopefully everything will be in place.
Mr. Caskey, you're the liaison to the Rescue Squad, and I'll ask one question. Are you good with this document?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, that's all I gotta know.
Yeah, I think we're good. The membership is somewhat well with it. The board's good with it, so... I mean, I think it's definitely a step in the right direction. Like I said, this is... We're looking at this as a transition year. If we see some things that aren't working the way we want them to, we can adjust and move forward with that.
Well, Mike, thank you for your work on this. We know your heart is in this. You've been on that board. You're a police officer, you're a volunteer fireman as well. And so you've put a tremendous amount of work in here. I like the bullet point here, that one of the first things they're gonna do is evaluate the types of calls and services they provide and return to the core value of providing rescue services when needed. So this is a good document, it's a great starting place. It's good for the taxpayers, and I appreciate your work on it. And I'm like, Commissioner Pierce, if you support this, then I certainly support it as well.
Thank you. I'm not a volunteer fireman. I was a volunteer EMT, but I'm not.
I thought you were a volunteer fireman. You're down in Enig, Bill.
EMT.
EMT?
Yes, but I'm not current.
Now he's in the National Guard.
That's right, skinny guy.
There's only enough hours in the day, so.
Do we need to do anything with this, or?
A motion to approve...
Make a motion.
So, yeah.
Yeah, so there's one thing the board does need to do, and that would... If... I think what their request is, is for $415,000. Is that right, Commissioner Caskey? On their budget?
Well, I think... What was last year, $433,000?
Last year was, according to their budget, it was $429,000, but I think it was... And then this... Based on this, they're asking for $415,000.
So...
We've only got $420,000, because that was just, I think, a typographical error in the contingency. It should have been $430,000 to leave... Or $430,000 or $440,000 to leave them where they were, putting it in contingency. So the board would need to vote to amend the budget to move however much you want to move from contingency to the Rescue Squad. You want to do $415,000, or?
Well, they're asking for $415,000, is that what the final number was?
Yes. Page one of the budget.
So we can do that, or... Here's the thing, that if we wanted to do the $420,000 and authorize the $5,000 to go towards capital, one of the things that we need to do to get... To be able to reduce the amount that the county puts into it is to eliminate some of the... There's two vehicles. There's a truck and an ambulance that we need to eliminate over the next couple of years. So I'm fine with either doing what they ask for. If we want to put the extra $5,000 towards one of those vehicles, probably the truck, because the truck can be paid off in two years. Either one's fine, I don't care.
What would the extra go toward if they're getting rid of the truck?
Well, we gotta pay the truck off. Once we pay the truck off, then that's gonna reduce our budgets, and then...
All right, so you want a motion?
Yeah.
Make a motion, we move $420,000 that was in our budget already from contingency into the Rescue Squad line item.
Second.
Any more discussion? Mike, thank you. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. All right, JDs on Dukeville Energy easement?
This is an easement to carry a water line to Duke Energy to the site. This is that road. I think there's a temporary road going in they're putting in right now. But this is basically to run the new water line out there to their property for future use by Duke Energy. And so this is their property granting us an easement to cross it with a water line.
So as you recall, we have a northern water system runs out to Dukeville. This would be an added line onto that, and they'd be granting us an easement. Any questions to Jay?
Who's paying for the water line?
I'll have to defer to somebody else for that.
It's certainly not the county. Have to be either Salisbury or Duke Energy.
As long as we're not paying for it, I'm all right with it.
Yeah, it's gonna take a lot of water. Take a lot of water. All right, we have a motion to approve the water line easement?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And then we've got another one, don't we? Oh, this was a project.
No, we got a budget amendment.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Make a motion to approve the budget amendment.
Okay.
Second.
All right, any discussion on that? Need to tell us anything? No, we're good? All right.
Aaron, you want to tell us what these are for specifically, or should we just...
They're for social services. It's for contract labor, helping. This is in the foster care division. They need... They're gonna need help, because I think they're down to one or two employees.
One.
And this is just... We'll be moving money from contracted... I mean, from unrestricted fund ballots to contracted services in the amount of $15,000.
All right, we have a motion.
Budget amendment, first day of the year.
Yeah, already, you blew it. All right, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right. And then... Let's see. I know we got you on there, Scott, were you?
Yeah, he's a...
Are you next?
He's on the care.
Project Care.
They have meant to change.
That's not it, did you?
Did they hand this? Yep, there it is. Yeah, it's here.
I'm sorry. Yep, we got it. All right, sorry about this, Scott.
It's all right, you made a... Rehash what I said.
Spend your night with us, so.
Sorry, I'm sorry for the confusion. And like I was saying earlier, this involves a Project Care, which the board approved incentives for back in January. We've been waiting for the word on the project. The company has informed us they've acquired about two acres of additional land from their neighbor, where a portion of the improvements they're talking about will go on. So they've asked that the board consider adding an amendment to the agreement just to add that property description into the agreement. All the other terms would remain the same, the jobs, the investment, everything.
Okay, pretty simple. All right, we have a motion to do that.
I'll make a motion to approve it with the amendment.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Scott, sorry.
Thank you.
All right. All right. All right, let me see, we got closed session. I move the board now into a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.1182, to consider an honorary award. So as soon as we clear out, we'll get started and be done with this pretty quickly.
Somebody raising their hand out here.
Um, this is the public comment section. Uh, wasn't fast enough, but I'm from Partners in Learning, and you guys approved, uh, money for us for our, for Pete's program, and we just wanted to thank you, so I hope you guys something, so thank you today.
Oh, wow, sure.
Is it money?
Is it food? Is food?
Well, uh, it, it's, it's, it's not appropriate for the county to accept gifts based on appropriations. We appreciate it, but it, it's something that we'll have to respect for decline.
Could you give it to these folks? Yeah. Yeah, sure.
Yeah, sure.
It says, "Thank you for making lots of, uh, uh, body, triple D, special, and..."
Well, good, well, thank you, uh-huh. Yeah. Yeah, and that, do you speak Canadian?
Yeah.
Do you? That's good.
I think they speak French, Scott.
Yeah, we're back at a closed session. We have a motion adjourned.
So, second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you.